All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved.
What's that?
Coup de doo.
Barb and Lynn. Any ceremonials, recognitions, proclamations, or memoriams? Peggy, any proclamations?
I have announcement later on.
Okay. Then we can move on to financial statements. Wes?
Okay. I'll begin with the balance sheet. Come on in.
Let me get there quicker.
Here it is. We ended the month of September with nine hundred ninety thousand in the bank. Two sixty-one of that is in the general fund. Seventy-five is in the reserve fund. And the remaining is six hundred fifty-three thousand or whatever is in the street fund. And you can see four hundred nine thousand, about four hundred and ten of the street funds is in CDs. Seventy of the reserve fund. And two hundred twenty-two thousand is in the street fund money market. So, large percentages of the funds are all invested in drawing interest. And we owe twelve hundred dollars of payroll taxes at the end of the month. So that leaves a net fund balance of nine eighty-nine, nine hundred eighty-nine thousand.
You told me you were gonna make a million.
Pardon?
You told me you were gonna make a million at the end of September.
That was contingent on your donation.
I thought not, not, not getting previous.
We may not, well, we might make that check. Okay.
Take the belt.
Any questions? Okay, let's go on to the street fund.
Street fund's at the end.
Or the, excuse, thank you. The general fund. You can see, we had government receipts of twenty-six thousand eight seventy-three in September, making a total of two twenty-two, five ninety-one. And through September, we ought to be at seventy-five percent of our budget. Since we're through seventy-five percent of the year. And we were, we're just over that with the county sales tax. And seventy-five point six percent, that's our largest revenue item in the general fund. And municipal aid, we're at eighty-eight thousand. And we're over seventy-five percent there because in July, we get an advance payment, which is then deducted off of our monthly receipts to repay that advance. But still, at twenty-four hundred dollars, almost twenty-five hundred a month there, we should get another seventy-five hundred dollars. So, we're gonna be over budget on the municipal aid. Business licenses, year-to-date's fifty-six hundred. The licenses are under budget, we're only at fifty-six percent. And we're working on cleanup of those right now. Building and construction, there was only six hundred fifty dollars in September, making sixteen thousand for the year. And that's more than double our budget. No fines in general this month. We did receive a fine in October, some fine money. Planning commissions had eleven thousand nine hundred. Year-to-date, that's sixty-eight percent of the budget. Might end up short of the budget there, but expenses are also under budget. So, when we get down to that, I think we're ahead, we're not losing money on the planning commission. Solid waste, it was fifteen dollars for the month, making seven hundred for the year. So, total receipts were twenty-eight thousand, making two hundred fifty-seven thousand, six seventy-eight year-to-date.
Just a comment on the bag tag sales. Jill is going through the records of sales of bag tags. And we'll be contacting people that, you know, bought five tags in 2022 and haven't bought any since. And trying to find out what their status is.
All the letters went out today.
Okay. Encourage them to participate in a fair and honest fashion, or they'll ruin it for everybody.
Is it possible that they signed up with a monthly subscription to Carroll County?
She's checking on that. I think maybe one or two did, but generally speaking, not.
Yeah, okay.
I verified with Carroll County Solid Waste, every address that was on the list.
I see.
Just to double-check who was still a bag tag customer with them and who had an account.
Okay. As far as expenses go, in administration, salaries and benefits are about seventy-four percent of budget. So, are online with the budget there. Legal fees are fifty-five percent. And you get down to the other expenses. We are over budget on dues, fees, and licenses. And I think that's primarily, most of that seventy-eight ninety-five is municipal aid dues. And we've already received the bill for next year, and that's about what it's gonna be next year. We did not have a budget item for equipment. Going on down, office repairs were over budget on that. We're over budget on supplies, getting the office stocked with supplies. Utilities were six hundred dollars over budget. At least, the electric bill was two hundred eighty-five dollars that we paid in September, which would have been August bill.
The last time I grabbed those, because it had something about the stake pool.
So.
Yeah, we are getting a bill for the parking lot lights now.
I ain't gonna tell you what names.
And other expenses, the major item there was advance of the planning for the advertising and promotion commission, nine thousand dollars, which wasn't originally in the budget. Building and construction, total year-to-date in salaries and benefits is ten thousand four seventy-five, are under budget. Code, we're over budget on code inspections. And I think those would be when David needs to have the, what the inspector from
Electric.
Huntsville come to do electrical. Code enforcement, we're at fourteen thousand five thirty year-to-date. Our sal, for salaries and benefits, was eighteen hundred fifty-six during September. So, we're under budget there, but by the end of the year, probably with three more months to go, and Rusty spending a lot of time there on infractions, we'll probably be close to the budget with that. Other expense, that was in software that we weren't expecting to pay, two thousand dollars that we had to pay. And the vehicle, that shown is four thousand dollars over the budget. I think that I haven't got that. No, I do have the amended amount in there. So, we're under budget by four thousand dollars on that. District court. Prosecuting attorney, attorney is seven fifty a month. And that's the only expense that we've had there so far. Planning commission, we've had eight forty-three in wages. Not much in wages there from her due to Lynn's efforts.
No, that's what Jill helps me with.
Okay.
All right.
The, the seven hundred eighty-three would be an allocation of Jill's wages. Other expenses there. We did not have a budget item for equipment, so probably need to go in and amend that. Everything else is pretty much in line. We did not buy the software that was budgeted there, two thousand four ninety-eight. Public safety. Okay, the rent for the sheriff's office is online. We are under budget on the sheriff because we didn't, they didn't have full staff at the beginning of the year. Now, the Dan and I have talked, our bill for October was over twelve thousand. So. Because deputies put in a lot of time. They had some deputies, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen hours a day.
Yeah. We need to have a discussion with the sheriff's office about, if you average out the last four months, it comes out almost exactly, I mean, within two hours a month of two full-time deputies. But, they'll have like two hundred ninety-eight hours one month, three hundred and fifty hours the next month, and stuff like that. So, I mean, if they're real short one month, they try to make it up the next month. And that, I don't think that's the right way to do it. So, you know, this, this, this month's billing was actually more hours than what we've contracted for.
Yeah. It was three hundred and seventy-seven hours, I believe, so.
It should be something like three hundred and forty or some, three hundred and twenty. Should be three hundred and twenty hours, I think.
For four weeks.
For a normal, four weeks and a fraction of a week. So, we're, we're gonna have to talk to them about how they do the billing and how they do the staffing out here to get it a little more consistent.
And solid waste, that's the dumpster down in the parking lot at Spizer Marina that runs about two hundred a month. So, our total expenses for the month were twenty-two thousand one ninety. And year-to-date, they're two forty-four eight sixty-five. So, we're still ahead, twelve thousand eight thirteen for the year. Any questions? Okay. Next, okay, the reserve fund, no change in that, that's seventy-five thousand. The street fund, total receipts were twenty-four thousand three forty-four for the month, making our total one hundred ninety-three, seven thirty-eight for the year-to-date. So, basically, we're the largest item, we're seventy-five percent of the budget. So, we're a little over budget there now. I am a little concerned. The, the special revenue fuel tax, which is the largest item, was only twelve thousand dollars in October. And we didn't have any expenses. So far, we've paid out ninety-six hundred dollars for the traffic signs that we bought. And we'll have another bill for, I think it's thirteen thousand, for street markers and posts and stuff. But they haven't, we've gotten the bill, but we don't have half the, don't have any of the posts. So, they ordered a hundred posts. So, we'll be holding up on that. So, anyway, so far year-to-date, it's ahead, street funds, they had a hundred and eighty-four thousand. But we'll be having to pay the district for the road maintenance, which will be twenty-four thousand before the end of the year. Any questions there?
It is interesting on that fuel tax. You know, why that, in the peak travel season, why that tax, sales tax, would be dropped off that much.
Yeah.
Maybe worth a call down to the treasurer to find out if they did some major reallocation, you know, statewide, that, that we're getting a smaller per capita amount now or something.
I can email, put my contact down there, and she usually gets right back to me, so.
Because that, you know, going into the budget season, we need to know if that's,
Right.
if that's a seasonal thing, or a timing thing, or a major reallocation statewide of, of the funds. Because, you know, we're, we're dependent on our per capita, staying consistent statewide. Maybe they found another million people somewhere or something that.
I don't know. See, our allocation of those street funds is just among the cities. Counties are not part of that because they get their own allocation, so.
But if there was a major annexation, major incorporation, or something like that, shifting population from counties to cities, that would tend to dilute our percentage.
But I don't recall seeing any news item about any such things, so.
Yeah.
Okay, any questions?
You might want to call around to the other cities and see if they've seen the same decline.
Good.
Which one are you talking about?
Yeah.
The special revenue fuel tax, our biggest root, tax item. Wes, Wes said that for this month, it was only about twelve thousand.
That's, this is through September, so what month are we talking, October's not over?
Well, it's, it's not over, but we got the check for October.
Oh, okay. So, you're talking about what check you got this month in October.
Yeah.
I might have commented when we were going through the general fund that we have is in the budget for the fire department. We're probably going to be having a bill of fifty-four thousand for radios and associated items there if they get installed. And then we talked about that, and I recall that maybe last month, we questioned the chief about that, and he said, "Well, that may not even get done by the end of the year."
I don't remember that, but we'll have to check. I mean, we approved the expenditures, so.
Yeah.
We just have to understand when, when the bill is gonna be due.
I called the office today, and I didn't get any response there yet, so.
I move that we approve the financials.
We have a motion to approve the financials. Who have a second?
Settlers.
Barb's second. Barb, sir? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Financials are approved. Moving on in the agenda.
It's fine, sure, it's on your machine.
Planning commission?
The only thing we have coming up on our next meeting is two short-term rental applications. But we are going to initiate some conversations about cottage-type arrangements because there's strong rumors about that maybe coming to Holiday Island. So, we want to be prepared as best we can. Cluster housing.
Oh.
That's the right term.
Okay, that it?
That's all.
All right.
Unless you had something else done. Okay.
Just strong rumors, so.
All right, buildings and construction. It's just kind of, I mean, there's stuff going on, it's just kind of quiet. I know he's working, there's still two houses going up, at least, maybe three. And he's working on a building permit for, I believe Wes's neighbor, or it seems to be neighbor. So, there's still activity. It's slowing down a little bit, though, as far as new houses go. Code enforcement, I did send out, we got a FOIA request for a list of all of the notifications and citations and things for, you don't, you don't have to get that, Jill. I'm not gonna actually go over the list here. But I did distribute it to the council members, just, just for your information. And since we got a FOIA request for it, Rusty created the, the list. It's a, it's a long list, so I mean, you'll, you'll be able to see that he's been busy. It's for twenty-three and twenty-four year-to-date. You can, you can see from that the kinds of things that he's working on, but he's been busy.
Where are we on these condemnations? I mean, we did have that taken care of in the ordinance, right?
We have condemn, condemnations in the ordinance, yes. And we're not actively pursuing any right now. You know, if we did condemn one, we'd have to have money to do with, to, to tear it down or do something with it.
And Dan, I'll comment at four thirty-eight this afternoon. I got a follow-up request on that for the actual letters still in the city's possession.
I guess we have to give them to her, huh? Well, this is gonna take, you know, one or two days of Rusty's time to print out all those letters.
I think some of them are probably in that database, the ones that he didn't create. If Eric created any of them.
Very few, though, that he didn't create. Okay, moving on, fire department. We did get a report. Didn't look too much different from the past. Most of it is EMS calls. We did have a big building fire again on condos on Beaver.
I think that's the same unit that burned down seventy-four.
That's what I just wanted, because it seems like the same location, yeah.
I'm with you, Ken. I think, I think it is. Do they, have they decided what caused that fire?
I haven't talked to the chief about it.
We could, we could see.
I don't think, was there anybody actually living there?
Or be.
Were the adults occupied?
Yes, yes, they were. Two of the four, two of the four were short-term rentals, and they've both been destroyed.
Two were occupied.
Yeah, but the first one, I think somebody was always there.
Yeah. Number seventy-four and seventy-six were short-term rentals, so by default, the other two were owner-occupied.
So, we don't know whether they're gonna rebuild or what they're gonna do.
Have no idea. All right. Chief's not here, although we can get an update on the radio thing, but we'll, we'll find out what the status is on that. All right, deputies' report. Can see like Wes was saying. For some reason, when Wes's printer prints on the office here, it's got this left-leaning bias. That's not a political statement. But for some reason, okay, it doesn't show up there. On, on my copy, it clips off one side of it. So. But you can see that, you know, the number of hours per day is not, it's not
Consistent.
Consistent, if that's the correct term. Some days, we, we have fifteen, twenty hours, and some days, we have no hours, and.
Yeah, it's kind, it's kind of interesting.
So, I know that Sasha's been back in the police academy again. So, that could explain some of the inconsistency. And we do, Combs is no longer our deputy. So. But we'll keep working with the sheriff on it. I don't think he's intentionally slaving us. I think it's just a real difficult, you know, managing that deputy staffing is, for the county, is very difficult. They don't have enough people to go around. All right. Linda, anything on broadband?
The last I heard, the last, they were reporting in the monthly, or weekly meeting they have, every other week, excuse me. They were saying that the bids, that the, or the bids were from the ISPs on the properties, or on the locations, I should say. Those should be approved for grant money by the end of this month. Or they, they will be at least selected who's gonna win. And then that has to go to NTIA for approval. But that process of the ISP's bidding on certain properties should be done by the end of this month. And so, we will see whether there were any that were not bid on. Because I imagine it's kind of difficult process. They have to figure out whether it's gonna be financially viable to them and how much they need to bid. And in the kind of land we live in, it's, it's an expensive deal to string fiber to those locations. So, we'll see who many, how many bid, and whether all the locations get covered or not. Know something more by the end of this month. There's, and the last, they were also saying that what they call the curing process for what the BEB project did about figuring out which locations were viable for fiber, or would be up, that's still not over with. So, I'm kind of questioning, I don't, I don't fully understand the whole process, frankly, so. But, and the last I saw, they didn't have the map totally out there to show all the locations yet, so. We'll see, maybe we'll get an update in a week or two.
Okay.
Sorry, I don't have more to report, but it's kind of cloudy.
Yeah, it is kind of cloudy. And I'm sure that there's a certain amount of cherry-picking going on. You know, that, though, all of the ISPs You know, that, all of the ISPs will go after the easy profitable ones first. And the Holiday Islands will be the last of the pickings.
The rest of the county, most of the rest of the county is more or less flat compared to us. And between us and Grassy Knob and this edge of the county is probably the hilliest. And so it's most difficult terrain. But the other thing I wanted to mention was, they have this digital skills program that they're rolling out, too. They got funding to provide more, some digital skills training for the population, too, to go along with providing better internet service out here, because they, you know, have concluded unremarkably that we need a lot of digital skills training in the county for everyone.
Too late.
Too late for most of us, yes.
It'd be cheaper to just give everybody a grandchild.
I can't afford anymore.
But, you know, and of course, a lot of studies go on during this process, too. And so they've done some studies on trying to qualify or find out what the need is for digital skills training. And they have concluded that, like nationwide and specifically in Arkansas, digital skills are needed for most jobs today, duh. Nearly, and it's amazing, I mean, nearly 70 to 90% of all jobs that are advertised require some sort of digital skills. And also, with digital skills comes higher salaries, too, duh. But anyway, they have done official studies so that they can feel confident going forward that, you know, that'll pay off if they can roll out digital skills training. And so there will be, I'm sure, you know, some grants that are offered or bid on from Carroll County to get more digital skills training in the county.
Okay. Alright, AMP tax committee, Rice, you got?
We completed the 120-day requirement for the enforcement and collection part. We met that deadline and got that set in place. It's really the last report, I guess, before the election happens, the last city council meeting. And I guess people already voted on that starting Monday. I think it was the start of that vote. There's still a bunch of misinformation or unknowns about the tax. We'll try to clarify some of those, and I hope that we'll see one of those clarified tonight. Any other issues? On that, we're waiting for it, Count.
Okay.
We are well under budget also. We were given the $9,000. We spent less than 10% of that this month, so we are well under.
Good.
We have three more open meetings. One tomorrow at the ballroom, Monday at the ballroom, and then Tuesday at the campground.
It's tomorrow?
Tomorrow, Thursday.
Thursday, I'm sorry. Thursday, October 24th, 6 o'clock at the ballroom. Monday, October 28th, at the ballroom, 6 o'clock. And then Tuesday, October 29th, at the campground, 6 o'clock.
Are you seeing new faces and same questions?
New faces, similar questions.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
I'd like to make a comment as a member of the AMP commission, and that's, do you mean we had a barn? We paid for the rental of the barn, or we accommodated that rental tax to ICID. And we had a member there, or a person there that was totally against the vote and wanted everybody to vote no. And my point on that is if he wants to have a meeting, he can rent a facility, he can have the meeting, he can get all posters all over town that he wants, but he can't control our meeting. Our meeting is for the tax. We're your AMP committee, and we let him take over the meeting. And it was not good, and it's not gonna happen again, as far as I'm concerned. Everybody has a right to their opinion. Vote no, vote yes, that's fine. I agree with that, that's America. But if we sponsor the meeting, we pay for the meeting, and we advertise for the meeting, then it's vote yes. If he wants to have this meeting, vote no, have all of them, that's all I'm concerned about.
Okay. Moving on then to ordinance 2024-013. Every year, this time of the year, we have to set our tax millage for, property tax for Holiday Island, even if that millage that we declare is zero mills. So we have to get this by state law. We have to get this to the county in time for the quorum court to be able to be aware of that when they're going through their budgeting process. So do I have a motion to approve ordinance 2024-013? An ordinance levying a tax on real and personal property in the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas, for calendar year 2024 and declaring an emergency?
I'll move to approve it, but I have a problem.
Okay. We have a motion to approve, and Lynn made a motion to approve.
I'll say.
Okay. And so I'll read it and then I'll open it for discussion. An ordinance levying a tax on real and personal property in the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas, for calendar year 2024 and declaring an emergency. Whereas Arkansas Code Annotated ACA 2673-202 states that the governing body of the city or town must certify the rate of taxation levied to the county clerk annually. And whereas this must be done prior to the time fixed by law for the quorum court to levy taxes, Arkansas Code Annotated ACA 1414904B. Now be it ordained by the city council, the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas, that section one, real property millage for maintenance and operation, a tax of zero mills is hereby levied on all real property within the city limits of Holiday Island, Arkansas. Second, section two, personal property millage for maintenance and operation, a tax of zero mills is hereby levied on all personal property within the city limits of Holiday Island, Arkansas. Section three, the city recorder treasurer is hereby directed to file a copy of this ordinance with Carroll County clerk as soon as possible after the passage of this ordinance. Emergency clause, since this ordinance is required to be submitted to the quorum court prior to the levying meeting, an emergency is hereby declared to exist and this ordinance shall be in full force and effective immediately upon passage, passed and approved by the city council of Holiday Island, Arkansas, on this date of 10/22/24. I will open it now for discussion.
My concern was realized when you read the title. It needs to be for the year 2025.
Good point.
Yeah, I've read it a dozen times.
And I was already to disagree with you now. Now you're gonna bring up something that I can't. Yeah, it is 2025 next year, isn't it? I don't know how it got to be, but it is.
Alright, any other discussion? And I'll move to a roll-call vote for approving the ordinance with the correction, changing the year from 2024 to 2025.
And they sat down in the body of the.
It's in the title.
It's in the title.
Title, right where we can all see it, but. And we went right over it.
Okay. Councilmember Dumas?
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood?
Aye.
Councilmember Graves?
Aye.
Councilmember Coon?
Aye.
Councilmember Lawler?
Aye.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
All in favor, Your Honor? Okay, the ordinance passes with the one correction, and we'll get corrected copies for signatures tomorrow.
Make a motion to approve the emergency clause.
Oh, good point.
I'll second that.
Who is the motion?
Ken made a motion to approve the emergency clause. Pat seconded it. Any discussion? Roll-call vote on the emergency clause? Councilmember Dumas?
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood?
Aye.
Councilmember Graves?
Aye.
Councilmember Coon?
Aye.
Councilmember Lawler?
Aye.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
All in favor, Your Honor? Okay, the emergency clause passes. Alright, moving on then to ordinance 2024-014. I won't read the ordinance because I'm not proposing that we vote on it tonight. We have time to vote on it. Since we haven't had time to discuss this, I wanted to have discussion first and then we can vote on it in the November meeting, which will be in plenty of time to have it in force before the end of the year. If you go through the exhibit there, the parts in red are the changes. We add non-governmental entities in the text. If we're going to, I guess it's, ICID is a quasi-governmental entity, so we should, I wanted to strike non-governmental entities because we're including quasi-governmental entities. And then, we didn't really have a fee structure for the campgrounds, the ballroom. The restaurant we did, but not the barn, the ballroom, and the campgrounds. So, and I guess, and the island room. So, I added AA to the table for meeting room and event space. That should cover the ballroom, the island room, and the barn. And then the campgrounds, and I put the campgrounds in basically the same as hotel motel. At $5 per space, there's 31 spaces in the campgrounds. So I think if you add all this up for all the different locations, it'd be about $455 worth of business license expense for the district. And that may be the extent of the changes. Although I did combine, we had, the original ordinance was 2023-020, and then we amended the ordinance on 2024-007. I combined the two previous ordinances and then into one ordinance, and then made the most recent updates. That way we have our entire ordinance in one document. This is, this is the problem with not having our ordinances codified. If we had our ordinances codified, we wouldn't have to worry about the original document and then any changes that were ever made to the original document, because they would just update the muni code and indicate in the muni code what ordinance was responsible for that section of the municipal code. But since we don't have that, in order to clean things up and not have an original ordinance with two amendments floating out there, I combined it into one document again. So, any discussion on that?
Hey, in reading the statute, there's something based, you know, I mean, I have a and I read our ordinance, and it says for each business. To me, it seems like the district, they're operating a resort, and these are things that are part of that resort. And they should, they should only have one license. I don't see, I don't see how you could.
If we had a bank here that had two locations in Holiday Island, they'd need a business license for each one.
I don't think that's gonna happen.
But that's the law. That's our ordinance.
I said that's, I said our ordinance says that, but I disagree with that. I mean, these are not separate businesses. They're all part of the same entity.
They're amenities.
Huh?
They're amenities.
Next door, we have a grocery store. They have one license. There's our groceries and they have a restaurant.
But it's the same address. That's true.
So is the same. So is the ballroom and the restaurant.
I think that's what we were basing that item on, by segregating out by address, like if you're.
Yeah, but we've got, we've got the ballroom and the restaurant different in this. I don't think the island room has a different address. The island room. Doesn't have an address. You can't mail something to the island room.
That's true.
You can't mail, you can't mail.
You can't mail it to the barn either.
You can't mail it to the barn, you can't mail it to the campground, so come on. It's one business.
Maybe I should have misstated it as a location, distinct location.
Ken, before we bring the group in, let's let the council hash things out.
If we're gonna, if we're gonna make them get a license, I think it ought to be. Bring back the chart to bottom, if you would. Well, this way. Don't we have, I guess we do have just two locations, right?
Which one are you looking for? The amendments are AA and AB.
That's the only two amendments?
Yes, to the chart.
I was thinking there was another one.
To the fees, that's it.
I don't think there was any other.
No, there's no other changes in the chart.
So what were the distinctive licenses? Describe them? Since they're gonna have.
They would need a license for the restaurant.
The restaurant.
They'd need a license for the ballroom. They would, unless we had a category that says restaurant with, with.
Restaurant isn't rented, ever, is it? Just the ballroom is rented.
Yeah, we have, yeah, well.
When you rent the ballroom, they usually rent the restaurant.
But this?
I mean, the restaurant's part of that.
I just think.
I mean, it's one rental.
Yeah.
It might be a catered event, but you're renting the ballroom.
Yeah, that's true.
You're paying one fee for a catered event.
Yeah.
So that's one thing. Restaurant isn't really a thing you rent. It's one brand.
Yeah, but they still need a business license.
They might, but I'm just saying it doesn't fall under short-term rentals.
This isn't a short-term rental.
But, or the AMP tax.
This isn't the AMP tax ordinance. This is the business license ordinance.
Okay, okay. I just, and I was trying to draw a distinction, because this came up because of the AMP tax.
Right.
The restaurant is still in the same location.
But it is a business, you're right.
As the.
Yeah, but it's, it is separate from the.
And it would be separate.
It's drop at the grill, right?
It's not a restaurant.
It isn't a separate address. Does ICID even, in their bookkeeping, do they, they don't separate it out either, do they? It's a department.
Ken, can you be in the ballroom and the island room at the same time?
I don't think so.
They're physically separated then, aren't they?
Yeah, but they're a separate address.
According to our licenses, multiple physical addresses. Even though it doesn't have a post office address, it's a physical location separate from each other. It's a separate business entity. They collect a rental fee for that unit separate from what they do in the ballroom. That's what our ordinance says. I know you said you didn't agree with the.
I don't agree with that.
That's how it defines it.
I mean, it's not a separate business. It's, 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 the district is operating a resort. And in that resort, they got multiple operations. They're not separate businesses. It's all part of the same thing. That's me.
I'd have to agree with you, Ken. I'm, you know, I'm anti the whole, having ICID have a business license. And, but we actually excluded them initially because they were governmental. Right, yeah. That's okay, six of one, half dozen of another. That's okay. Six of one, half dozen of another, you know.
As far as.
They're not, they're not in business to run the amenities.
Do they collect?
They.
But they, it's for the benefit of the property owners and they're not making, not giving them any profit.
May, may I make a distinction?
Yeah.
Does that entity pay sales tax?
Yes.
So the state of Arkansas considers them a business. We should do. We can't exempt them because they're a business. We may not like it, I like the taste of it, but we have, we have a reason to. If they're a business, they need a business license. That's what we went about.
And I'm, if we're gonna go that route, okay, fine, but let's invent a new category and give them one business license for everything they run for the district. One, one business.
Thinking ahead, if you look at how, let's say Eureka separates out sales tax. Food is different than retail sales. If you have a pro shop, and you have a restaurant, and you have a meeting room, they're all gonna fall under different categories eventually if we levy a sales tax. So, we probably need to be issuing a unique business license number to each of those.
I don't think so. They're making one tax report. They're not making multiple tax reports. They're not, they're not making a tax report.
How does the CED report the sales tax? One thing, right?
They, they, they make one payment for sales tax.
So I guess I would have a question then about if they're going to be renting out the restaurant to somebody other than HISA to run the restaurant.
That's a separate.
That person would have to get.
Yeah, they would have to have.
Just like the marina.
Yeah, yeah. So that person would have to have business license on it.
I don't disagree then. It's November under HISA's.
It's not a question whether they need a business license, it's a matter of how many.
If we, if we say that HISA can have one business license, even though they, that business license would be an umbrella license to operate the, a campgrounds, a restaurant, a ballroom, a meeting room, and, and, you know, other facilities, then if I, if I have a short-term rental business, I have one business entity, I file one tax return, and, but I have six rental properties here. Do I get six business licenses or one?
I think we said.
We've been, we've been requiring one per location.
Per location. But to me, yeah, and to me.
Just like if you had two bank, two, two branch banks in town here.
Well, and here's, here's a.
I mean, we don't, we don't have an example of that right now, but if CS Bank had two different banks in town here.
Going back to the short-term rental stuff.
There's a slight difference between.
We do have.
Somebody who was.
We decided that the business license was issued to a person.
Right, and if he had six units, he got one license.
Right, that's how we've been doing it today.
That's how, that's how the ordinance reads.
So they get six copies of one license to post?
That's exactly what we came up with.
Okay.
So they wouldn't get bombarded.
So could we not do the same thing here? They get three copies of one license.
And one more distinction, one more distinction with HISA. We have all of these entities and we, we let people rent them. We're, we're not in it to make a profit. We're just there to cover some of the expense of having the buildings and having that amenity. HISA does not make money on these entities.
No kidding.
And now we're asking them now to pay a business license on something that they don't make money on anyway.
There's a lot of businesses don't make money. That's not our problem.
But they, most businesses are in business to make money. And them not making money affects the whole community. Correct.
HISA would make money on those if they could. Believe me. The fact that they're not isn't intentional.
No, it's what.
They'll, they'll never make enough money to.
That's what the boo birds are howling about is subsidizing them.
So then I understand what you're saying, because if, if it's already that somebody who owns six businesses just posts that same license in each business, then it would make sense that HISA would have one business license and it would be posted on each one of that.
Yeah.
So let's, let's put on the path that if there's a majority that thinks that's the opinion, what should the fee be? Five hundred dollars? Because that'd be fifty dollars more than the added.
No, no, I don't want to be lost on that.
Oh, a nickel?
It's what I think, I think they're like a hundred and fifty or two hundred, or they're, they're big businesses.
So the way to handle it, if that's what you want, you need, someone needs to draft a paragraph G and modify the exception of above and make a G for, for HISA specifically. I don't think you should make it general. I think it ought to be specific. If someone's gonna draft that text. So we can consider that with the other revisions next time.
I think, I think it's, I think it's in the context of a resort. I don't know what else you would call it.
Well, there may be a new disorder next month.
Improvement district, because that's what it is.
It's probably what it is.
No, but the items that we're talking about are something different.
They started out being amenities, but fifty percent of the revenue, probably at the most, comes from assessments anymore. But most of them.
And it was always intended as such, that the assessments were paid for the amenities.
Until they didn't.
Until we got older and we have more maintenance than we had originally.
The problem, the whole problem is that we have lost so many of our non-residential property owners that the assessment income has gone down tremendously.
But I don't think that that can be a factor in our deciding.
No, it has nothing.
Whether or not they're a business and whether or not they be licensed, we have to treat them the same as we treat any other business in town. If we're gonna have, if we're gonna let one organization have an umbrella business license to operate a laundry list of different businesses under that umbrella, we have to offer that same opportunity to any business person that comes to town here.
What are you, what are you foreseeing?
If Bryce builds a ballroom on his, on the farmhouse and rents it out, is that?
Still part of the farmhouse?
That's still one business license then? If, 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 I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm.
I don't, the ballroom is not a business, okay? I mean, how in the hell?
Yes, it is.
No, it ain't.
Yes, it is.
Oh, it ain't easy.
They rent it out to all kinds of people for different events.
Just because it's a bad business doesn't mean that it's not a business. I mean, they don't make any money on it, but it, that's a promotion problem.
If we're gonna cost HISA money by making them have six business licenses, then my suggestion to HISA would be to stop renting them out, any of those, it's for property owners only. It's not a business. It's an amenity.
Not according to the state of Arkansas. The thing they sell gets taxed. They're a business. I bet they have a business EIN number or whatever you call it.
Everybody. But they got one.
Okay, so if someone drafts a paragraph that exempts them and put on the chart for HISA the fee of whatever you think it should be, we'll talk about it next month.
I don't know that we need to exempt them. What is the like, I understand Dan's point. What's the likelihood of another business coming in that not has multiple units of the same thing, but multiple different things?
I, I think there's a pretty good opportunity for that to happen. There's all kinds of discussion going on in our community. There's two owners of the properties up there at the Table Rock Landing now. And one of them's got a lot of bucks. He's spending it in other places, but what are you supposed to gonna do with Holiday Island someday?
Well, what, what's his proposal to?
I haven't seen anything from him. I'm saying he's, he's a big player in our part of the country. What might he do next?
Well, we'll go call Johnny Morris and see how many licenses he's got.
The other is some other property that's the potential for development, and I've heard three different stories of what they might develop it for. Two of them are business adventures. One's real estate. So I don't know what they're gonna do with it. And how we're gonna look at that, what they have planned, I have no idea how it's gonna shake out. I've got a question, if you don't mind.
Yeah, I'll open the floor to discuss.
When you get to the rec center, you can rent the pavilion, you can rent the pool, you can, you, are you gonna give them a, yeah, are you gonna give them a business license for the, for the, every one of those things, a pool, one for the pool and one for the atrium down there, the pavilion, I mean.
Yeah, I, I think that's one location that has multiple things they rent down there myself.
Bryce's situation where you run a restaurant and, and rentals, non-rentals, right?
I just have a restaurant.
I'm sorry. I thought the motel was yours too.
But it used to be a single owner restaurant.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Mera, I'm not representing VOC, not the A and P Commissioner, which I'm on, but I'm gonna go over and see Mike Maloney tomorrow. And I'm gonna ask Mike, as the head of CAPC, which is our A and P Commissioner here, do they charge Eureka Springs buildings for a license for, like, I know they do for the yacht. That's different. That's a huge different thing. But I know the Inn of the Ozarks, we're amazed. You have a meeting there and there's two hundred people. That big ballroom gets a fee, okay? Our problem in Holiday Island, and the VOC argued about it yesterday, debated it, is we have representative groups that are using the ballroom and other groups, but they're going out of business because they can't afford the current rate that's at the ballroom. Peggy's right next to me here. She's done a wonderful job in the last two weeks, three weeks, at the bar complex and at the ballroom, and she's got another one coming up on the Thanksgiving Day. Five hundred dollars for the ballroom. Well, six percent of that for the A and P Commission is thirty bucks, right? Have I forgotten my, please, right? But I agree with what Lynn's just brought up. Maybe we could have a separate one for, for HISA, because the only two that me, Ken Brown, leaves, should be treated as a night, short-term rental are the campgrounds, no problem, and the ballroom. Now, we've asked Rich Higgins, the General Manager, District Manager, to come up with a new position to replace the manager of the ballroom for an events coordinator. We want like twenty weddings a year in the ballroom, that beautiful deck we have and so forth. That you should charge six percent, and that you should have a business license. But the island room, give me a break. The island room has twenty-four seats, and you're gonna charge and make them pay a business license for the island room? No, this doesn't make sense. And we've been losing groups. The, we have about four groups left, and they can't afford the rent. The Island Singers went to my church. They couldn't afford the ballroom. The Island Singer, one of the best groups. Many of you were on it, me included. There's other groups. The quilt league, the yoga, the, you know, I can go on and up, but many of them are out of business. They cannot afford, that's why I wanted to re-call this community building rather than. That's a different story. But I'm gonna ask Mike Maloney, what do you charge to get your two million dollars? I know it's hundreds and hundreds of hotel rooms, hundreds of B and Bs, like yours, Sharon. And that's fine, but why charge a business license for the little ball, the little room that's upside of this room right here? It's not a business. It's a meeting room. It's one of the facilities that the residents use for meetings. And you're gonna charge them whatever the fee is up there. That doesn't make sense. And that's why I wanted a meeting between this group and the Board of Commissioners. Unfortunately, I'm the only one here. And last night we had three members nominated. Now there's only two. One dropped out, and I want to talk about that on comments if you'll let me at the end of the meeting. But we've gotta protect what we've got. We're going downhill. We're going downhill on interest. We're going downhill on interest and serving, and it's gotta pick up. It's gotta pick up.
Ken, when someone rents the, the island room, do they pay a sales tax?
No.
You sure?
Not that I'm sure. I'm not sure.
I mean, they've rented the space. Do they pay a sales tax? If they do, they're a business. They're operating a live business.
I, I should try. I don't know.
Yeah, and so, to Barb's point, if they don't, if they don't wanna pay a business tax, they need to quit charging rent.
I think in a ballroom, I think in a ballroom, they do pay a sales tax, but I'm not sure.
Can I ask a question? You mentioned a six percent.
I said, I said three percent. I meant three.
But you're talking about what the A and P Commission may get on tax. Okay, that's different from a business license.
I know, I know, but why should we have a business license and pay SRT tax on the island room? I'm bringing up that one.
Right, also, Mike Maloney doesn't have anything to do with the rentals.
He's a CAPC. That's short-term rental.
Yes, he doesn't, he, he only rents the yacht, as far as I know.
He's in charge of CAPC. He's, he's a businessman.
But, but we wouldn't have, the A and P wouldn't be in charge of our rentals at all.
Yeah, you would. Mike, well, Mike, Mike Polley has nineteen. We would charge him three percent. We didn't go with one percent on the restaurant, but Mike has nineteen rentals.
But we're not talking about business licensing. We're not talking about collecting A and P tax. We're talking about charging them for a business license.
But I'm saying we do not need a business license on the island room. Do you think we need a business license?
I'm for the one license for all, myself.
Yeah, but that's not what this says.
Yeah, that's right. Well, I understand. That's why we're talking about it.
That's why we're talking about it.
Well, we're actually talking about a license, four licenses, right, is the way it stands right now.
All right.
One for the campground, one for the rec center and everything around it, and one for the ballroom.
That's three.
And the barn.
And the barn. Well, I think the barn ought to go with the rec center, personally. I think it's the same location. It doesn't have a separate address.
We've already said multiple businesses, even if they're two different types at the same location.
And I think what's still up in the air is, is it one or three?
It's.
One.
So.
Okay, so someone needs to draft some text for a paragraph G.
Let's agree on something before we draft text. We're, right now, just so I understand what we've got, everybody concedes that the way it's written right now, the campground would have to have one, the rec center complex would have to have one, and the ballroom golf course would have to have one.
Country club complex.
Yeah, that would be three. So that's what, two hundred dollars plus five dollars times three.
And the, the price is negotiable at this point.
So that's, what, two hundred dollars plus five times thirty-one, a hundred and fifty-five dollars, three hundred and fifty-five dollars.
But again, the price tag would be anything we want to make it.
Okay, and I, I know, but listen, I wanna establish where we are. See, I don't have a real problem if we could reduce those rates a little bit for those things and just leave it at three. I think that's because there's gonna be some more changes made.
And we just have to think.
The way HISA operates, which is gonna make it even more complicated for us, like if they suddenly some of those things.
But like Dan said, we have to make it consistent for any business.
Well, you know.
I'm not sure.
The same owner.
I'm not sure we need any new text or anything. If you look on page four, item three, right, right at the bottom.
Yeah, it says multiple businesses.
Says multiple businesses. Any person or entity engaged in two or more business types at any one address or location shall pay the license fee for only one, for only the type bearing the highest calculated fee. So as Pat pointed out, that would mean the rec center complex would have one license, the clubhouse ballroom would have one license, and the campgrounds would have one license.
That's three hundred and fifty-five dollars.
But there's one fee that's the highest fee?
But the campground would be five times regular, so it'd be, it'd be three hundred and fifty-five dollars for the three. And if you wanted to change that amount, I think we're, we probably could get a consensus. Change it to, it'd be more palatable, maybe seventy-five dollars, and then the five dollars. Just a thought. Go big guy.
You ready?
No, he's the boss. Ask him.
Um, all right, a couple of them, I'll, I'll answer a couple of them. I will say the reason this is here is because the A and P sent this request off to the city to talk about the business license. And the issue that we came across was that we don't get to pick and choose in the state law for the compliance of the A and P tax. It clearly shows meeting rooms. Meeting rooms are happening, which means enforcement happens. We don't have an option. That's what that came down to. It said not having a business license, the only mechanism to collect A and P tax is a business license. The A and P tax is tied to a. to a business license by the ordinance. The A and P is tied in the A and P ordinance that they are assigned with the business license to the business that is established.
It's your, your rule, your resolution you passed?
No, it is the city, city ordinance.
Okay.
Creating the A and P, uh that, that permit is tied to the business license.
Is there an effective reason for that?
Um, it's that way just about everywhere, in fact, the A and P law says that they have to have a business license for us to be able to do business to issue an A and P permit.
There you go.
It just makes logical sense.
What about towns that don't have business licenses, like Berryville?
Um, they don't have an A and P.
Does anyone have an A and P?
There's no A and P there. Um, so the enforcement issue came up, and so we started looking because of the idea of the government entity deal. Um, and so we started looking in other cities, we found the state of Arkansas has business licenses in Little Rock doing business. Not necessarily for the admin building itself, but doing business, retail selling or anything else. In the A and P law, we had three options to pick from, we picked section one for short-term rentals, section two was on food, section three was on state parks inside municipality limits. And so it also lets us send an A and P tax to the state of Arkansas to collect from. So I didn't see any reason why there would be any exemption for it. In the business license requirements, um, for the A and P part, it talks about that it should be unlawful for any person or business or entity, any entity subject to the A and P tax to transmit business with the business, or with the city of Holiday Island prior to the issuance of the receipt of the advertising portion of the A and P tax permit from the city of Holiday Island. That's in section four, five of the A and P uh deal. And I'm even confused because if the business licenses are, one, business license for multiple places, that is not what the business license ordinance says right now in section one oh one, A, two or three? Two, uh A, A two in one oh one.
You have one printed out.
It was about, it was a conversation about the S T Rs of how the A and P permits were to each individual address, and so there had to be a different business license with each address that the A and P permit was listed to. It was for the tracking mechanism of who was paying taxes and who wasn't paying taxes. And it's the same for the categories for restaurants and everything else, if in the future some other tax was passed that only that entity would pay. There was a reason for the categorization before A and P was knowing who would pay A and P permits and not issuing A and P permits to every business. This is a big confusion in the whole deal for the election of the A and P to pass, there are some people that are confused why the S I D would be taxed. Uh, but in that timeframe, we did find out the S I D does pay sales tax on every amenity, every rental, every location. The campground also pays the additional two percent tourism tax already, that is for short-term rentals as far as motels, hotels that the state does for tourism, uh so we didn't see any exemption for that either. Problem came back to the action that they are doing in the front of house outside of the admin is a business. And then we can't exempt it.
I'm glad you pointed that out, you know, at least one, one of the things, because it, um, it reassures me that my memory isn't failing. Because I was, I was convinced that if a particular bank had two branch buildings in, in Holiday Island, they needed two business licenses. And that's exactly what it says in one oh one, A two.
Right.
Some of that was from the.
The reason why we don't require it for short-term rentals is because of the exemptions we make in E and F.
Right, and the mindset that one business operator is managing multiple places.
And if I may, I wanted to explain something that um Ken started talking about, the history of the C A P C. When they first started, they used retail as well as restaurants and hotel lodgings. They got rid of the retail early on, but they never included the meeting rooms because the law didn't require it. The law has since added that in there, which is why C A P C and Eureka doesn't charge. Because their ordinance was pre the law, and they didn't have to change.
So, does the law exempt them from updating their ordinance?
I can't answer that, I'm just saying that they aren't, and that's what's confusing to.
There's no following the original ordinance that the city filed, at that point, there was no vote required to enact an A and P tax. And so their ordinance clearly states that it is just for uh the food, uh and, and that stuff, it does not include meeting rooms in their ordinance.
Okay.
So we shouldn't do that, because we.
Also, what I'm concerned is the three groups that are very important to Holiday Island, one's the Fireman's Auxiliary, one is the Friends of the Barn, and one's in HIHOP Hospitality Association. If they have to pay fees to rent the ballroom, and I'm talking about the ballroom mainly only, because as of now, it's five hundred dollars. Uh, that's way too high, no, but it's not gonna.
That's not a city concern.
I know, I know, I'm talking about rentals.
I said concern the fee at zero if they want to.
Yeah, but if they earn enough money, and we still are debating this code, um, they had to pay it earlier, and with a new district manager, we finally got that arranged, so that if you earn, Friends of the Barn are two thousand dollars to support the barn, then they can rent the barn last Friday night for the October eighteenth festival, which was wonderful, they don't pay anything. So, on the uh screen you just had, it said meeting rooms, one hundred dollars, uh Lynn, was that for a, a business license?
Yeah.
When, okay, so you've sort of agreed, or you haven't voted on yet, but you sort of agreed, there would be one center, the uh ballroom area, that up there, so if you rent room, room A, if it's still, I think it's gonna be turned into a golf uh pro shop, but it probably will be for sure, but anyway, if you rent that or the little room B, that's uh, that whole complex, right? So one business license, the ballroom, one business license for the rec center, that would include the barn, the um meeting room, the island room, and the uh whatever, so that's another, and then the third one was what? Yeah, so we've got three business licenses, I think the board of commissioners would go along with that and support that, but what we're concerned, what Barb brought up, is these groups that don't have a lot of money, uh once H I C pays the business license, then as far as uh paying, and this short-term tax, I guess was a different, different item, but that's up to our committee. But, and I've argued about it and not been too successful of it, but I need, we need more uh discussion about this. I wish there were more citizens here to talk about it, because we're losing these groups. We're losing these groups, they're not gonna pay, they don't have enough money, as I said, the Holiday Island singers are now over at a church. Our church is not for Holiday Island singers, it's for a church, they should be up in the ballroom. So, we've gotta have a fairness here, and I know you're all fair, and I know you all want the Holiday Island singers and other groups to be successful, but we're not gonna gouge them, we're not gonna gouge them, I know you're not gougers, so let's be fair about it, and I know you will be, that's all I have to say.
Well, we don't have anything to do with your rental of the, I mean, you can rent them all for zero to those organizations if you think you can, can budget it, and that would solve, there would be no A and P tax for them.
Yeah.
For the users, not for the H I C, for the users.
I would rent it for the cost of cleaning up.
But that three percent of zero was zero.
But it isn't a H I C fee, the A and P tax is paid by the renter.
No, I know, I, no, I understand that, but, but there would be a fee to nobody if they wanted to rent those for zero. I am vice president of Friends of the Barn, we don't pay anything to rent the barn, so they wouldn't pay any three percent on that. I'm advisor to HIHOP, we don't pay anything to rent the ballroom. I mean, because we bartered for it with other, other services.
But you gotta put this thing in perspective, and Dan told me the other day when I was talking to him, that the, H I C has only budgeted seven thousand dollars now for the whole.
Two hundred and ten dollars is what.
So you're talking, all this is about two hundred and ten dollars with the A and P tax money. So, come on, guys, let's get realistic.
Well, the, the whole, the way we've got it written right now, it's only gonna cost them three hundred and fifty-five dollars for a business license.
Okay, so.
And two hundred and ten dollars for an A and P if they rent it to their budget.
Now, I, I really, I think we should make a separate category for that particular governmental entity and set whatever special rate we need to keep it low.
Or change meeting rooms to ten dollars and campgrounds one dollar, and the fee goes down.
I don't see any need to change it for everybody else.
There is nobody else.
There isn't even.
Because this is a public facility occupied by the community.
That was one of the most contentious meetings we ever had, was trying to set rental rates for facilities.
I think it's fine, just the way it's written, to be honest.
The only request I would have is if there's a way to get to a solution, because the public is confused about what would happen, and I think the vote depends on what it happens here, to know and clarify that action, because with the A and P and what we put out, is not clear right now with the S I D not having a business license or being responsible for A and P, that confusion exists greatly right now.
Well, you should have been able to make it abundantly clear in the two rooms that you rented, that the A and P is a responsibility, no matter what. The business license, it's just a matter of dollars and cents, it's gonna be ten dollars or, or two hundred and fifty, or whatever, it's just a dollars and cents thing. They need a business license, we just need to put a value on it.
Just make it fifty dollars, fifty dollars and five dollars, and, and if anybody complains about that, that's a hundred and, two hundred, but what, yeah, a hundred and fifty-five dollars for the campground and a hundred dollars for everything else. Fifty dollars, and leave everything else to S I D, unless you want change the fee for the campground too, I don't care. It's gonna be passed on to the campers, you know it is, so.
Can, can I give one answer to that, that's on the number? It does say in the part that the business license, like the ballroom, would have one, it does say for that one location, whichever permit is higher is the one that it would take, and a restaurant license is a thousand, or a hundred dollars. So if you made a ballroom and a vent room at fifty bucks, it would not take that license, it would take a hundred dollar restaurant license. So the number is still a variant of what the general norm is for the rate.
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't think, it's still.
I, I, I think the, I think the three, three licenses is the simplest way to, to do it, one for the campgrounds, one for the rec center complex, one for the, the clubhouse complex.
There you go.
And um, and, and, and be done with it. Three hundred and fifty dollars is rounding error in the H I C budget, so it's not even gonna show up. And um, and what I've been telling people about, you know, that, that are confused about whether or not the property owners are gonna pay the A and P tax, or because the property owners shouldn't be required to pay a tax on their amenity, or is H I C gonna pay it, and that's not any good either, because H I C can't afford to lose the revenue. I point out to them, you're talking about two hundred to two hundred and fifty dollars a year in tax total in exchange for potentially giving up a twenty thousand dollar a year advertising promotion budget.
It's a forty thousand dollar a year.
Yeah, so, come on, people.
Dan, I'd like to add to that, though, even at the point that we are right now without even passing the tax, we did grant two hundred and fifty dollars to the barbecue deal that did rent the facilities from them uh to the tune of almost a thousand dollars, so even at this point right now, they are one-seventh of their normal budget from two hundred and fifty dollars that the A and P spent to bring that in there. So.
So.
And if the A and P can't bring in more business to the golf course.
Well, that's the.
I mean, forty thousand dollars, his peanuts compared to what we could do for that.
Over and above, over and above taking over the responsibility for advertising and promotion, taking that financial burden off of the district. The whole point of the A and P is to bring people in to use the facilities, so they should be renting the ballroom instead of letting it sit empty. They'll be renting the barn instead of letting it sit empty, they'll be selling tee times and, and golf cart rentals on the golf course. They will make that business license back, if we, if we even do lousy at our job.
Right.
They'll make that, that money back a thousand times over.
They'll make it back in one day easily, doesn't it?
So, I, I, I think, I think we've, I think, I'll, I'll, I'll clean up the wording on this and send it out one more time.
Is this?
But I think, I think we.
This number three here, is that contradicting the one up at the top?
No.
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 No, it's, that's at one address.
That's why we say we can combine, Ken, that's why we can combine what happens at the ballroom or what happens at the, at the golf center, rec center, and the camp center.
So in other words, the campground will be paying for the rental facilities, and rentals, basically, clearly. And that, those will be outside people paying for.
Watch the time.
Yeah.
Okay.
And as your sick relatives, you wanna send me that.
Well, I mean, it was a good discussion, I think we, we came up with a, a solution, that's.
It'd be nice if we had about a hundred people sitting out here hearing some of this discussion to clear up some of the questions that we're gonna get Thursday night.
All right, next on the agenda, resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero eleven, adopting a logo for the city of Holiday Island. We're gonna try this again, even though I'd rather poke myself in the eye with a stick than work on this.
I make a motion to adopt the logo, the resolution for the logo.
Are you making a motion, we adopt this logo?
Yes, I am.
I'm gonna second it, I love that.
All right, we have, Pat made a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four oh eleven, and every time I look at you, my mind goes blank.
Sharon.
Sharon, golly, I gotta write that down.
Well, thank you for that.
I apologize, but I have no control over my brain anymore.
I wish I could get him to forget my name.
Don't worry, everybody's gonna have their turn on that. So.
All right.
Right, so, Pat made a motion, Sharon seconded that we adopt resolution twenty twenty-four oh eleven, so let me read it. Resolution adopting a logo for the city of Holiday Island, whereas cities typically have a logo to be used on official documents, vehicles, employee apparel, signage, and other city authorized uses, and whereas the city of Holiday Island had adopted a proposal made with resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero zero eight that originated from the Holiday Island Hospitality Association, and whereas subsequently HIHOP has decided that the city, city should not use the logo, now be it resolved by the city council of Holiday Island, that resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero zero eight shall be revoked in its entirety. The attached logo shall be adopted as the official logo for the city of Holiday Island. The city logo will have no commission, department, or committee designation as a part of the logo. Any individual, commissioner, or department wishing to use the city logo must have prior approval from the mayor, passed and approved by the city council of Holiday Island, Arkansas, on this date of October twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. I like it.
Is that, is that a moon or a sun?
Where did you get this one?
From an anonymous contributor.
It's okay, I like it.
It's okay, I do, it actually looks like Holiday Island, can it?
I can see my house.
What?
On the island.
It needs to be the other way around.
Right, is there any, is there any discussion?
No. That's the sun, right?
It's the sun.
Not the moon, okay.
It can be the moon if you want it to be the moon.
Yeah, it's really nice. It is.
Our kudos to the art, artist.
It's nice and clean, I like the fact that it's clean, and it's not, you know, it's, it's general, it's not, it doesn't. And it's not, you know, it's it's general, it's not, it doesn't say we're a golf course or something like that.
It also looks like more of our place on Table Rock Lake.
Yeah.
It's the way it does flows.
More our type of.
The lake turning into the White River.
Yeah.
As opposed to the White River turning into the lake.
Well, depends on what direction you're looking in.
Well, that's the White River coming into the lake.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, if there's no other discussion, we'll go for a roll call vote.
Okay. Councilmember Dumas.
Aye.
Councilmember Elway.
Aye.
Councilmember Graves.
Aye.
Councilmember Coon.
Aye.
Councilmember Lawler.
Aye.
Councilmember Mills.
Aye.
All in favor, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, the resolution passes and we have a logo. And now, now that it's passed, the anonymous contributor wanted to remain anonymous because he wanted it to be uh voted on on the merits of its artistic value, not on, not because they didn't wanna hurt somebody's feelings. So thank you, Lynn, for coming up with this logo.
It would have still passed.
Maybe. I did not, I didn't draw any of it. I found it in different free-to-use places.
There you go.
Unless there's some sort of copyright on the on the uh the script.
We'll get sued later.
Did you, did you erase the little R at the bottom of it?
Nope.
The next, the next shoe to drop will be a letter from Conway saying you're infringing.
Yeah, that's right.
I looked on a lot of places, didn't see this piece of art used anywhere.
Okay, last thing on the agenda was the proposed general fund and street fund budgets for discussion only again. We will have to approve this. Well, we technically, we don't have to have a budget until February first or something. But we like to get it done before the end of the year. So.
Do you want me to put anything on the screen?
Um, you can put it, yeah.
The city but the city proposal? Okay.
So the last one I put up there, yes, that one. And I'll make a couple of comments or maybe Wes will. Go to the, yeah, general fund, go all the way to the top first. The carryover, the beginning fund balance of two fifty-five, six hundred, Wes needs to take a look at that. I basically used a number that was rounded off uh to pretty close where we were at the end of August, I believe. And Wes said it'll probably be maybe twenty-five or fifty thousand less than that.
I came up with a new number, but to come up with that, all that I did was take your number and deduct what it looks like we're supposed to pay for the fifty-four thousand in the fire department.
Okay.
To subtract that, but if you wanna more updated number, I'll have to take a look at that.
Yeah, why don't you come up with a, a pretty good forecast of where you think we're gonna be?
Because if you take the fifty-four off of the beginning balance, basically end up with uh two oh one carried forward, which then gets.
So change that number to two oh one just for talking purposes.
Um, yeah, so then.
Now, if you scroll all the.
Two oh one, five oh nine, it would be. And then at the bottom, we would end up with.
What do I have in there for the fire department in this version?
Um, eighty-four, seven, three, five.
I don't know where it's at, Dan.
Um.
The revenue or expenses?
It's it's under, yeah, expenses under public safety.
Come on, school.
But I need, yeah, in column D. Be towards the bottom.
Right there. Right, yeah, next, next page. Woo, right there, that's the.
Hundred thousand.
That's the elephant in the room.
Yeah.
Um, I had put in fifty thousand, you know, we, we were um we were right at fifty thousand contribution to the fire department this year. We made it in, you know, in in the form of paying for the radio upgrade. And um, so I was gonna put fifty in again for the fire department for next year. Uh, talking with um Rich the other day, he was um really, really, really wanting us to contribute a hundred thousand if we could. Because the the primary reason, and again, I wish, I wish the fire chief for here, he could explain what what what's going on. But um, you know, we bought a bunch of new fire trucks and stuff and um did, you know, some of the uh equipped them with some of the things that they need. Apparently, they need new air packs for all of the trucks. Air packs, I guess, being the tanks that they wear with the mask and stuff if they have to go in a, in a fire. I'm guessing that those things are probably like fire extinguishers. They have a uh a useful life and you probably have to get rid of them. Even if they're still working yet, you probably have to get rid of them with new with new ones. But anyway, they have a huge expense facing them again uh this year with the, with the High SED budget to replace all those air packs. Um, I told him I'd bring it up with the city council. We have enough money in reserve to do this, 'cause if you scroll all the way to the bottom now, um, you know, we we would still have a fairly substantial ending fund balance.
No.
Well.
They dropped the one and four because of the two fifty we changed at the top.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I um, I I just.
But that also includes a hundred thousand.
Too far down.
Well, we still have seventy-five thousand or eighty thousand in the general fund reserve.
Seventy-five.
Yeah.
Um.
And obviously, you know, we can't, we can't do this multiple years in a row. This would be a one-time shot.
No, last year we got fifty-five thousand and now they want a hundred. And we get no credit for doing that, none whatsoever. We don't get anything, any cooperation that I can see from them. And I, I, you know, let them get their own budgets. I'll go for fifty, but I won't go for a hundred. But they they've got some cutting, they've got some things they need to do for their budget to get it straightened out. That's all I got to say about it.
Dan, where are we, uh, where do you think we are in talking about roads and taking on more roads and paving and that kind of stuff?
They won't, they won't go.
Yeah, there, um, there's a little bit of, I'm gonna say, uh, I I want, I don't wanna be, I don't wanna sound critical because there's good reasons for it, but there's, we're a little bit, we're 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 kind of in a state of paralysis.
Okay.
When it comes to moving forward on roads. Because High SED is very concerned that at some point, they're going to be forced into doing a reassessment of benefits and they don't know how that would turn out.
Okay.
And um, so it's it's still, it's still kind of a, you know, kind of in the hands of the lawyers. Uh, the last suggestion that their lawyer made was that we swap roads, that they take Hawkback and um and give us Woodsdale so that we could pave it with the grant money. But I told them that that's not gonna work because it's a, it's it's a part of the grant program that we have to commit to maintaining that road in perpetuity. And uh, so there's still giving it back. And um, I'm kinda surprised that their attorney didn't think that through and and realize that that would be the situation. But um, I think what it's gonna come down to is that um, city's gonna have to make a proposal and um try to force the issue.
Okay. The reason I asked was, you know, the the mindset or what mindset we might have moving forward for what we can take over from High SED.
Right. I mean, the whole reason for us incorporating, well, not the whole reason, but one of the big reasons was so that we could take over some of the financial responsibility from the SED.
Right.
So that they could reduce assessments or at least, you know, reduce the rate of acceleration of assessments to extend the life of the assessed benefit. And um, and most of our money is in the street fund.
Right.
And we can't, you know, the state's not gonna let us just keep piling up, you know, half a million dollars a year in our street fund and not spending it. So it, you know, it, it, the the issue's gonna be forced at at some point by somebody. So the the city might as well go ahead and push it.
I think it's time. I mean, we need to resolve this because.
My my personal opinion is, is that I don't know what they're scared of as far as a reassessment of benefits.
Well, you know, that.
It's not turning the roads, turning the roads over to the city is not going to have a negative impact on the property value.
So that would be my thought too.
So if it has zero impact on assessed value, then it has zero impact on the assessed benefit.
That's, that's.
So what, what's, what's the fear?
I'd like to hear the reasoning behind it.
The logic behind it is the val, the assessed value for the roads is based on the 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 building of the roads, not the maintenance. And that's what we're talking, I mean, that 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 decreased value is there.
The 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 value of of the the cost of what it took to do the improvement has nothing to do with, with how they determine the assessed benefit.
Yeah.
They, they.
Well, that's getting to do with the maintenance.
It's property value in a, in a community that has these amenities here and property value that is in a community without any of these completed capital improvements.
Right, and they make that determination by looking at the assessors.
Value.
They use the assess, the county assessors.
Assessors' value wise.
Numbers. So, you know, that, that's kind of indisputable as far as um, you know, the qualifications of the assessor.
Well, I'm a little confused about the whole discussion because if we take over the roads, the city takes over, you're talking all the roads or just occasionally a little bit here and there?
I think we could, we we would, that would be an option, that we would make a pitch for taking over all the roads.
Okay, I mean, as far as the assessment of benefits goes down, the city is now providing that infrastructure. The SED is not, so the assessment of benefits would decrease.
It shouldn't because the road is still there. Your property is still.
It's still there, but it's not. Providing benefits to the property. But but the SED is not providing that benefit.
They can't, they can't assess for the maintenance anymore.
Yeah.
But it shouldn't affect the assessed benefit. The benefit that was accrued to the property as a result of the improvement that they made, even if that improvement was made in nineteen seventy-two.
Well, I'm I'm sure there'll be plenty of people out there that will.
There'll be disagreements.
And that's.
Well, I hear the point.
If it ends up in court, it ends up in court. I mean, there there's, we can't, we can't just sit here paralyzed for the next twenty years.
It's already in court, so.
Because the laws are written poorly and, you know, there isn't a judge in Arkansas that's gonna wanna touch it with a ten-foot pole. There, all the lawsuits so far have never gone to court. They've all been settled out of court 'cause the judges don't want to touch it.
That's right. The lawyers are making the money.
Well, we can always try and get the law changed.
So in that vein, that's why I raised the question for me to consider whether it's fifty or a hundred thousand.
I'll tie this up.
But we need any vote for streets in twenty-four or twenty-five.
Right.
Is there, is there more we can do?
For the fire department.
Is there more that we can do? Instead of spending on fire, we spend on streets. Is there more we can do for streets?
I mean, we, taking over all the streets would be a multi-year process.
Right, right.
So.
Would the city then also be responsible for snow plowing, ice clearing?
Yeah, everything.
We would have, we'd have to have the whole fruit.
The road department would have to transition to the city.
And it ain't gonna go easy.
Wow. So would they pay their wages as well?
Well, I'm I'm not opposed to the, to help the fire department out as best we can because we have the money here. And I know that it reduces our ending balance, but, you know, it's what we can do today. We may not be able to do it even fifty thousand next year, depending on what happens. We don't know.
Good.
We have it here today. I'm I'm okay with a hundred thousand.
But Mayor, I think you you have a valid point there too, that, you know, we have all this money sitting in there to repair the roads. And that's what it's for. And the state's not gonna keep giving us money to repair the roads if we're just putting it in the bank.
Right.
We have to be doing something with that.
Yeah, if we don't do something, if we don't force the issue, the state will.
Exactly, yeah, exactly, yeah. So that that's separate apart from assessments or anything else. It's roads that need to be repaired.
They're not working with this.
And the value of a, the value of my house is not dependent on the quality of the road in front of it. It's dependent on what's on my property. That's what the assessment is. Okay, so I just see the roads as being basically a separate issue other than maybe the tiling of it, but, you know. I live on the street with the snowplows, so I'm not, I'm, yeah, I'm good.
From a budget standpoint, I'm still planning on going forward with the, with the, with the, from a budget, purely a budget standpoint. Still going forward, assuming that we would pave uh Holiday Island Drive from twenty-three to Country Club and replace the curbing and everything at the front entrance. And um, because I'm I'm ninety-nine percent sure that the, the Woodsdale project, even if we get approved in December, wouldn't be funded until twenty twenty-six. So um, by twenty twenty-six, we can come up with another project to pair with the Woodsdale project.
Okay, absolutely.
I'd like to make a budget comment, uh, and I'm only one member of the Board of Commissioners. Uh, there'll be a new member on December third at the election. Uh, but I think I agree with Councilman Mills that uh as one member of the VOC, I feel we need to reduce our budget. Uh, it went from seven eighty as an assessment on your homes to E thirty-eight. Uh, and when we formed the city, uh, it was great because we talked about the, especially the gas tax, the back tax and so forth uh that we would get, and you've been wonderful to do that. I understand that over the years, we've given one million dollars to the SED, from the city. But we can't continue to do this, seven eighty to eighty thirty-eight to nine hundred to a thousand, without uh uh shortening the lifespan of the SED. Uh, Linda, you've helped me, Wes, you've helped me, others have helped me get a uh timeline for how long that will last before we go out of business. And uh currently, it's, some say it's fifteen years, some say it's less than that. But I am going to work, uh, we have a meeting next Monday, we're gonna start that budget process and I I really appreciate what you just said about roads. One of the other things that I think, uh, whoever wins the election uh November fifth for the District Six representative, I'm wondering if we could go to that person uh to look at some laws that change that would affect us on roads and what she would be able to do, uh, either Harlan Bro or Rick Laney, uh, to bring up in the January session. Uh, we've done that before. Uh, it's been pretty successful. Ryan King as well, Senator, is not up for election. But uh, the other thing I'd like to leave you with, or at least my final comment, and I'll be quick about it, is I'm really concerned about the number of people that wanna run for office, for your offices and for the VOC election. Um, I've talked to Wes in the last few weeks, I've talked to Jill in the last few weeks and the mayor about uh FOIA complaints from the citizen of ours, and uh they're really getting uh scary. And what I mean by scary is uh you have to have a lawyer, sometimes you have to have a lawyer to refute these claims. Mine was, uh, one of mine was that the mayor had appointed me to the assess, A and P commission. They said, no, you can't be elected to the VOC and appointed. That's against the law. It's not. So I serve on the A and P and I do the best job I can. So I serve on the A and P and I do the best job I can, and I serve at the VOC, which I was elected to. The other one was, um, I was appointed to the High CED Planning Commission. There is no High CED Planning Commission. The only planning commission is the one here of the City of Holiday Island. So I have to write a three-page letter to the attorney in, um, in Little Rock saying there is no, you know, I have to go through this hall of Falder Rock. And then, uh, if it's not, uh, and then the other one was, uh, uh, about the financial statement. Well, Jill keeps these at the city. They don't, they're not sent over to Conny Doss like the VOCs are. So they said, you didn't fill out one or whatever the complaint was. Well, she showed me, she kindly made me copy, but I have to send it all in at about eleven dollars certified mail. And if it's not, uh, adjudicated in my, uh, behalf, I have to go down there on November fifteenth with an attorney or without an attorney pro se and fight this stuff. And I know there's nothing you can do about it. I know that. Some of you have been subject to these things. But it's really, i- it's awful because we've got, last night we had three people running for one position for Mr. Stamps. By the way, uh, his complaint was he was President of the Rotary, but he can't be President of the Rotary and Chairman of the VOC. I mean, you know, is this America or what?
Right.
You know?
Yeah.
Well, the lawyer said, well, the Secretary of State is over groups like the Rotary Club, so that's how they got involved in that. But it's getting people upset. It's getting my family upset. It's getting me upset. And I know there's nothing you can do about it, but thank you for listening to me because we're gonna have fewer and fewer. We had three last night. We have two this morning for the position up there. So.
Well, if it's any consolation, I have two open against me. Well, one, one was closed yesterday that I got a letter that it was dismissed as being, uh, without foundation.
Yeah.
But I still have one open and, and it's, it's, I've sent them all my response and everything. But they, you know, they, they are going to bring it before their, their committee in November, so I have to attend their hearing on the over a hundred and forty-two dollar, uh, reimbursement that.
Well, on the top of the form, uh, it says either the year that you're filing the financial disclosure form. They said they might have to come up and talk to Wes and/or Jill and get a statement, an attorney, to get a statement that I actually, she notarized it for me. Okay, that's the exact date. She's a notary public and he's a recorded treasurer. We don't send them to Conny Doss. So, uh, I'm sorry it took so much longer, uh, time on it, but it really has got me, uh, right up to here. Thank you for listening.
Okay, back to the agenda. Any other discussion on the budget? I'll try to formalize that then by the next, uh, meeting so we can vote on it. Uh, moving on then to public comments other than Ken's public comments.
Well, first of all, thank you all for all the time and effort you put in as volunteers for the City Commission. Uh, I have a couple of concerns and questions about the proposed A and P tax on the November fifth election ballot. When discussed originally as three percent short-term rental and a one percent prepared food tax were discussed, the food tax was quickly dropped because several of the council members felt it would prevent passage of the STR tax. On April sixteenth, twenty-twenty-four, the ordinance twenty, twenty-four oh four was passed, which reads, "The levy of three percent tax upon the gross receipts of hotel, motel, short-term rentals and other accommodations to be used exclusively for advertising promotion for the City of Holiday Island pursuant to the authority of the Arkansas Advertising Promotion Act codified under Arkansas Code." Sometimes I think it comes down to the principal rather than the dollar amount. You may have heard, you know, often heard that. The Arkansas Code states that the tax authorized in this section should be upon anyone or more of the following expressed in the levying ordinance. The levying ordinance does not say anything about meeting rooms. It, uh, the ordinance says that accommodations. It does not mention meeting rooms. Eureka Springs does not charge A and P tax on their meeting rooms. Also, you, the state code reads, "The taxes on facilities for profit in a city or town." Does that mean at some point we're gonna start charging taxes in meeting rooms in a church? Somebody rents a church facility to use it? We're gonna get A and P tax on it? Maybe this is some, one reason some people are concerned. High CED is not a for-profit business, but a governmental entity that operates the amenities of the Holiday Island residents. It is directed by commissioners who are elected and elections run by the Carroll County Clerk. In discussion with the A and P Commission, I asked if the, they had obtained any legal advice about this one and more quote, comment. You know, one and more, some people interpret as being, there's food, there's motels, food, and state parks. And if you take one or more, but you have to take everything that says in there. Then legal advice, so. I was told that, no, that person did not seek any legal advice, and they did not know if the city sought any legal advice on the law. State laws can at times be confusing. On August fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four, the A and P Commission asked the city to amend its business ordinance to charge High CED for five business licenses costing High CED five hundred dollars opposed to a hundred apiece. But it should be noted that High CED has one state sales tax number and one federal ID EIN number. So if the federal government and the state of Arkansas consider High CED one entity, why should the City of Holiday Island consider it five? At the August second meeting, Councilman Sharon Lawler asked that Bryce Holland discuss the need for High CED to obtain these licenses. Barb Kuhn and Mayor Keyes stated that when the business license was being written, it was not intended to include the amenities of Holiday Island, even if they do charge fees and collect state sales tax. Mayor Keyes agreed that if the law passes, then High CED would need a business license. So does that mean that a business is defined by whether or not this law passes? That, you know, this, could this lead to a future lawsuit? Was it?
No.
Not a business? Law passes. Now it's a business. And also the actual ballot language. It does, again, does not state meeting rooms. When I asked the Commissioner Holland about this, he said that it was to take the position, to keep the proposition simple. In my opinion, a ballot is not the place for simple languages. If you look on the ballot, some of those other propositions around there are very long, very detailed. If you wanted everything included that that paragraph said in the state law, you should have included all of those things, not just lumped it under other accommodations. To some people, it causes confusion and makes them consider that possibly something's trying to be slept through. Sometimes it's, uh, and Peggy Ludewigs on October eighth, on a Facebook post on Holiday Island Neighbors said, the question was, or the statement was, who pays the tax? Visitors. Well, if it's not me renting a room for my daughter to stay in when she comes down here, I'm not a visitor. I'm a resident. This was, you know, it seemed like it was getting pushed through and is still being pushed through as a visitor tax. We're not gonna pay this. Nobody in Holiday Island is gonna pay this. When the question was brought up about, you know, if I rent the ballroom now for five hundred dollars, do I have to pay five fifteen? Some people said, you know, you know, maybe they just were assuming things, because there has been some assumption going on with this thing too, that, oh no, the five hundred dollars, now, second, it already includes the sales tax, so just include this other fifteen dollars. You know, it's not a large amount of money, but fifteen dollars, High CED already says it on a tight budget, fifteen dollars is the hour of payroll. Maybe that's the hour it takes somebody to clean up the ballroom after it's been used. So it is not just a visitor tax. It's paid by other people. Also, there's assumptions being made of what happens to the money. Correct. High CED, you know, the difference, if they only rent seven thousand dollars, it's two hundred and ten dollars, and they could get thirty thousand dollars worth of advertising covered if they do not decide to spend thirty thousand dollars on advertising. But you all cannot tell, and nobody can tell the commissioners what to spend their thirty thousand dollars on. They might decide that, you know, you already built the Taj Mahal, as some people call, maybe they want gold faucets in it now. So there's an assumption that this thirty thousand dollars, that, you know, High CED, you know, what are they gonna use the benefit for? And even if you got a commitment from the High CED people today, there are elections coming up, and in the future, you do not know what those people are gonna do. Bryce sent a comment to Jeanette the other day. Jeanette's when you sell it. That is exactly why we need to try to explain that if A and P passed, that homeowner's AOB would be saved by High CED, not for advertising, but infrastructure. You don't know. On top of the, High CED made a commitment that if this passes, the prices at the amenities would greatly change. I don't know. The High CED commissioners I talked to said they didn't make that commitment. What is AOB, what is, and I think this might have been part of a typo, but what is AOB was passed in a bridge club of home, if homeowners got to play for free? Well, you don't know. I mean, there was a big push when they got, saw the deficit, there's a big push by the district manager that everybody's gonna pay full price. They went, actually went back to last January and collected five hundred dollars from the Rotary Club that, you know, we'd never even billed for. All of a sudden in July, it's August or so, they want the five hundred dollars for last year, and we had to put a five hundred dollar deposit down for next January. So there's assumptions made, there's, uh, incorrect information being passed out. And I think that's why there's some confusion. And I think if you haven't looked at the A and P Commission law, go back and look at those three paragraphs. In the paragraph, it says, it does say lodge room, it does say meeting rooms. It also says for profit from businesses that are for profit. And it's, it says, you know, one or more, but there's other lines going there. Maybe it should be looked at by a lawyer. I know it's too late to get it off the ballot now. It's too, too late to change the wording. Uh, maybe the best thing could happen if it dies, dies this time and comes back around and gets done more, in more detail.
For what it's worth, our A and P ordinance was reviewed by our city attorney.
Okay.
So.
But he's talking about the wording of the state statute, aren't you?
I'm talking about both. I'm talking about both. It's on a ballot.
Yeah.
The state statute says, you know, levy in the ordinance. In the ordinance that is passed and it's on a ballot, it just says other accommodations. So I guess then that means later on, next year, you can pick a few other things because it just says other accommodations. Maybe because the meeting, you know, saying meeting rooms, it began, meeting rooms, you know, saying that you had to do meetings rooms is what has caused an uproar in the community.
So did, did not we discuss all of this earlier in our meeting, as far as the business licenses are concerned, right? And we talked about the business license covering the three entities. And actually, the, the cost of the meeting rooms is not something we have any control over. That's High CED, correct?
Right.
So that, that, we have no control over that one as well. So any of this discussion really is a High CED issue, not a city issue, correct?
No. The, the issue is whether meeting rooms were included in the ordinance.
They are included. Section two says it's per Arkansas statute twenty-six, seven oh five et cetera. So it includes the text of the, of the stat- statute. And it says meeting rooms for profit. So to help you understand, are you gonna charge for a meeting room at the church? Likely not, because the church is not a for, for-profit organization. They're a nonprofit. So they wouldn't be exempt from any such considerations.
So is High CED.
High CED is doing it for profit as a business because they're getting, they're paying sales tax. They're not a nonprofit.
Is High CED overall a for-profit?
No.
You are not.
No.
They're, they're a corporation by definition.
They are. They are incorporated. You're right.
Whether they make a profit or not is not.
Or they have for-profit corporation.
A profit.
Well, they're not, they're not, they're, as far as I've never seen anything says they're incorporated as a nonprofit.
Right.
As an example of the church and such
Uh-huh.
in collecting, and using your, collecting sales tax as the definition of proper nonprofit. At Saint Elizabeth Church, we have a gift shop behind us.
Okay.
They sell things.
Right, for profit.
They collect sales tax.
Right.
But you talked about a meeting room in Holiday Island at a church. That was your example you gave of Boeheim.
Correct.
I said, that would be exempt because that church probably wouldn't charge for that room.
You don't know if they charge it.
I don't know, but if they're a nonprofit business, they're not for profit.
I don't know. Saint Elizabeth.
High CED isn't for profit.
Saint Elizabeth.
Or Saint Elizabeth. So Saint Elizabeth should be exempt from the sales tax?
And again, and again, the, the issue, the issue would be if High CED is charging a hundred dollars for a room and they pay the A and P tax and they pay the three percent A and P tax. But if they don't charge a hundred dollars for a room, if they only charge ten dollars for the room, the A and P tax is negligible. It's all dependent on what they charge for the room, not what they, when they're adding the A and P tax.
The A and P Commission and the city has no control over those prices.
That's correct.
And to indicate that the A and P tax going through and giving High CED some money from it is going to lower those rents is indirect information. It's in, you know, it's assuming something that is not there.
So, so what, what's your, what's your remedy for that?
To be more, I guess, clearer in the future. Don't use things like other accommodations. Because when you first started discussing A and P tax, you were discussing rooms. And I can see in, you know, the, the compound should be included. It's a short-term rental. But, you know, and most people when they think of short-term rentals, think of a place to sleep overnight.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Eureka Springs, I believe, it has that as part of their ruling. Is, you know.
Overnight lodging.
It's an accommodation. It's not a meeting room.
Right.
Now, I just asked my trusty phone here what the definition of accommodation is. Because you mentioned accommodation. The North American definition says temporary lodging, sometimes also including board. So these meeting rooms aren't providing any lodging.
Right. Well, you could say it's daytime lodging.
Oh, come on. Well, someone leaves, I've been to, have been pretty boring there. He might take an afternoon.
Thank you.
But I'm just saying that the, the, the vagueness of some comments and the assumptions that have come to some comments and the statement that it's a visitor tax is what has caused a lot of people's concern. Just like you dropped the one percent because you're concerned about the uproar created by doing food, including meeting rooms. Because at the same time, what you're saying, that people have said, oh, they're gonna lower it, which now they are talking about possibly. But at the same time, the district manager is saying, we're broke and we need to start charging, nobody can have three rooms anymore. And that's why, you know, they, they're telling, hi-ho, we're gonna have to charge the five hundred dollars. They're charging the singers, you know, if they want five hundred dollars.
Same thing with the golf games.
And there is actually, when they're talking about raising the prices and having to get the collection and everything, they told the county election that they were gonna have to charge more. And they were out looking, you know, Jack Eaton was out looking for a different place to hold the election because they couldn't afford what High CED is going to charge us.
And High CED is reviewing all the rates.
Correct, but they're not doing it because of the A and P tax.
No.
Well, that, it's inferred from some people that the A and P tax is what's causing them to re, compare the rates, and there's no connection.
So is, is, isn't your primary beef from what the A and P Commission has been saying, not what the city's been saying? So you're in the wrong venue? Just asking a question.
Well, okay, that's another question I bring up to a lot of people. What is the split between the city council and A and P? I can't come here and make any comments?
You certainly can. I'm just asking.
Because they were all assigned by the commission.
To clarify, isn't your beef with what the A and P Commission's been saying, not what the city council's been saying, about its passage and its benefit?
No, because I have a concern with the way that the written ordinance is written and positioned on a ballot that it does not say. It just says other accommodations.
Okay.
On the ballot, I would expect that if that had, you know, if you say it has to be this paragraph, then they could have put that whole, that whole paragraph could have been put on the ballot.
Okay.
And that will cause people, thank you for your time. Thank you for your time.
I, I, yeah, I respect the fact that people are entitled to comments on it, but I, I have a hard time getting my arms around the fact that there's this much controversy over certainly less than $250. Certainly less than $250 total, spread out amongst a lot of people. And, you know, you, you said the principle was more important than the amount or something like that. Well, that's your opinion. I think, I think that I, I, I just don't understand why it is being raised as such a huge issue. Now, is, is Hy-Sid making all the correct choices? Probably not. My suggestion to them would be to put a, five free pool passes in every assessment bill. Everybody in Holiday Island gets to swim five times for free. Maybe somebody will use the pool then. Because I, I do agree that you can price yourself out of business. You'll, on paper, you might look like you have a potential to make a lot of money off the, off the ballroom. And in reality, it stands empty all day, all year, because you priced the local community out of the, out of business, out, out, you know, so. And whether or not it's a, a for-profit business or a, or a quasi-governmental institution that's here to operate recreational amenities for the property owners, that bridge was crossed 20 years ago when they opened the golf course up to the public. That made it a for-profit business. They're selling golf to the public, and they sell hamburgers to the public. And they are a business. Now, maybe they don't make enough money, but that doesn't make them any less a business. Okay, going on to council member comments. Hearing none, we'll move on to regular meeting schedule. Okay, no need for a special meeting at this time that I'm aware of. And no workshops scheduled? Any announcements?
Happy stuff. Happy stuff. We have a Thanksgiving dinner. By paper to demand, we brought back the rib people. And so we're having a Thanksgiving dinner at the ballroom. And in addition, for those of you that still want to eat at home, they are making turkey, turkey breasts and glazed ham and ribs.
I've got it.
So you can do pre-orders and pick it up.
I like drumsticks.
Well, you get to have the turkey then.
You can go to Hot Silver Dollar City and get them.
Okay, so we can enjoy ourselves as a two o'clock to.
I've only got one complaint, and I've always got it, and everybody here will be against me. Do not make dressing with turkey out of cornbread. End of story. But my daughter argues with me every Thanksgiving about this.
You weren't raised in the South evidently.
No, I was not.
Well, there's a difference when stuffing and dressing.
Yes.
Dressing is made with cornbread. Stuffing is made with regular bread.
Don't play semantics with me, Mayor. It goes into turkey, doesn't it?
No, cornbread dressing goes in a pan and goes in the oven.
No, 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 it goes into turkey.
I don't care what you do. I'm from Illinois. We don't, we don't put cornbread in anything around a turkey.
Well, I was raised on bread and everything.
I have tickets in case anybody wants to, I have tickets, so we're going to start.
I can't make those kind of decisions.
Okay.
Anybody else need them?
Hy-Haw normally has the meeting of, make the candidates, and so since Hy-Haw isn't doing it, the chamber was asked to do a meet the candidate forum for Hy-Sid. That'll be November 9th in the ballroom. November 9th. And then November 14th, the, is the annual chamber membership meeting, which we'd like to invite you, whether you're a chamber member or not, because we're going to go over a PowerPoint of all the activities that the chamber did. And the meeting will probably last a half hour. I don't like long meetings. We also have a New Year's Eve party at the ballroom, like we did last year. We're bringing in the sixteen, actually Rotary's doing this, bringing in the 16-piece band. And it'll be at the ballroom, 7:30, 8 o'clock to 10:00, because by then, everybody wants to go to bed. And that's $15, and I will have tickets on that also.
Welcome to Holiday Island.
It's a new New Year's.
The new New Year's.
Everybody's in bed at 10 o'clock.
Yes, okay, so those are just sort of fun things that are coming up that hopefully you'll put it on your calendar and join us. Any questions?
Yeah, after that, you can get down to Basin Park, because they're going to do a big New Year's Eve thing.
The, the CAPC actually spent 39, $37,000 building New York Times Square in the Basin Park. They're going to drop the ball down at the basin, and they're going to have bands and a parade, and they're going to close the streets and everything. They have 47 events between now and the end of the year.
Maybe their last event they have.
Well, they were iffy on the parade. They were iffy on the parade. They weren't sure who was going to be.
So if you have any other questions, thank you.
What's the calendar year difference between now and the end of the year?
Um, let me just see, one, two, four, I guess. We, we're catching up. We're working on it. Oh, and we have, I've been talking to people about a balloon involvement, you know, with the lights twinkling and maybe riding up and down the balloon, a kayak races, in addition to all of the things that we did this year. And something else, I forgot. But anyway, if you have any other ideas, please let us know. The chamber will try to put it together. Thank you.
Christmas parade. Holiday Island Christmas story.
We need a Times Square.
It started at woke and then ended up. I mean, that was two blocks long.
Motion to adjourn?
Yes, please. I move adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? I remembered your name this time.
You did.
I teach a class at a 30-on-10.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
I propose.
Then, did you siphon that?
Well, just be like that and run off.
Thank you.
No, my watch strike?
Oh, your watch strike, okay.
Yeah, I probably said more than I should have already been on the front page of the Eureka Springs newspaper that the city is taking over the roads in Holiday Island.
I've just been bothering you. I was pretty disappointed with this. I thought we'd have a whole lot more people than that.
Well, it takes, it takes time.
That would make a real hero out of me. Here in Egypt, the rocket balloon rides over the Nile. And I said, you have to get up at 4:00 in the morning for the third day of road. I just don't think it's worthwhile, so I promise I'm taking nine, nine thirty out and tied up. But can you get it for less than $800?
I, I gotta come up sometime.
You're only going to get one, I think. But the idea is they would tether it?
Anyway, I mean, I ended up after making the five.
I mean, individual delivery.
Tipped, it's really sick for the last two or four days.
Who has?
Ted Meyer.
Oh, really?
And Sally too.
COVID or something?
Yeah.
R S V?
Sounded more like blue. Throwing up and pooping.
I changed the title. I gotta take you when I can get you. We want to keep you here.
Oh, thank you.
And I'd like to destroy.
We do it again. It's starting with the bar and finishing with the bar.
It's very pissed me off. This whole thing about Hy-Sid is, is nothing. It's peanuts.
I'm talking about what are you going to charge for some.
There is. It's just very labor.
But the people in Holiday Island are stupid enough to get a $30,000 worth of outsider money because they think they may have to pay some portion of $200.
Right, you have to go through that and check to see who's on that list.
Good job.
Short-term rentals.
Who's?
But yeah, that's the last thing I did. April sent me a list of people that were not registered.
Oh, William Ramsey? Yes, yes. No, no, Josh Ramsey. I'm not with trusty. I don't know.
I was kind of surprised too, even through his main event. He seems like a kind of introverted guy.
Well, he, he was like the marketing guru behind. Oh, and he really wanted to have some of the bar. And they went to do it December 6th and 7th. I said, is there a way, just one year? But no, because of furloughing the employees. I mean, they have to blow through the pipes. It takes a long time. And they furloughed them in in the month. Couldn't get it in November 30th to do it in the sixth of June. They wanted one big time to hold them over for the. Because they made more money that one event in the year for three months.
Well, how did you zoom?
The reason he wanted it was because he had been enticing and then pushing again for the use of.
Taking a lot of grief for the one. He ran a successful oil business?